Welcome, and I'd like to call to order the Nashville Town Council Regular Meeting. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. We invite you into this meeting to lead and guide us in making the best and the right decision for all the citizens of Nashville. Amen. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for January the 2nd, 2020, which was an Agenda Meeting Minutes, and January the 7th, 2020, which was Regular Meeting Minutes, and January the 14th, 2020, which was a Call Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Are there any corrections to any of these minutes?
No.
If not, um, did I have a second?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, Lou, do we have any public? No public speakers tonight, so we'll move along. We have a public hearing to receive comments on the street and special events permit application for the 24th, that's hard to believe, Annual Nashville Blooming Festival. Any comments?
Mayor, I move. We're going too close. I mean, uh, public hearing, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Does anyone have any input or any discussion? If not, we'll motion, uh, do I hear a motion to come out of public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Nobody wanted to speak? Uh-uh. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to the items for consideration. Let's look at 6A. That's a consideration of a partnership with Nashville Elementary School in support of the One Book, One School, One Community Program. I'll ask Marguerite, uh, did you want to come forward, Mr. Mango, uh, Marguerite? Would you like to?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Do I need to tell you who I am or anything?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Quentin Mango. My address? Need that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I live at 601 Chad Street in Rocky Mount. Anything else? You good?
Fire away.
All right. Well, good evening to everybody. Thanks for having me. I'll be brief, but I just want to talk to you about our One Book, One School, One Community event. This is our third year that we're doing this event, and it is where we buy the same book for every student in the school, and then we have reached out and branched out to the community members and asked, um, asked our town and community to read the book as well. So we will purchase a huge number, like 800, 850 books, to have all of our families within our school read the same book, and then all of the community members. And we want to, it kind of helps raise awareness to the importance of families reading together, but also to allow the community to have some, sort of a common theme and common topic of discussion. Just if the police officers come to school, they'll be able to ask kids about it. If anybody's out at the grocery store and you see little ones who might go to Nashville, you can talk to them about the book if you're, uh, if you will join us in that. The first year, we did Adventures of a South Pole Pig, and that was a really awesome book that I had never heard of, and our school family really loved it. And then last year, we went to The Toothpaste Millionaire and invited the community in, and it worked out really well. So what we do is we have a big reveal of what the book is for the year, so I won't tell you what it is this year until March 3rd, where we have a big assembly in the gym, and we do the book reveal, and everybody goes home with a book. And then we come back on April 3rd and do a big culminating event at school. We're going to do it at school again this year, but, so basically, I'm just here to invite you and our community to join us in reading the book this year and coming to our kickoff event where we reveal which book it is, and then hopefully you can come to our culminating event to watch. A month later, we'll have, all have finished reading the book and spent the month talking about it, and we just want to invite you to be a part of it, and that's all.
Thank you so kindly. Do I hear a motion for us to partner with Nashville Elementary in this endeavor? So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's move on along to our next item of concern, which is a consideration of the street and special events permit application for the, again, the 24th Annual Nashville Blooming Festival. Do I hear a motion that we grant that permit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Our next item is the consideration of SU 2019-2, a request to establish a daycare facility at 110 Armwood Drive, and we've already had the discussion about that.
That would be Arrowwood Drive, Mayor.
Yeah, Arrowwood.
Okay.
Drive. Do I hear a motion that we grant this request? So moved. Do I hear a second? Any discussion?
The planning board's recommendation was to approve. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct. I have a comment just regarding the language that we have currently under the daycare facility on our books, where it was brought up by us and the planning board regarding the fencing that's required. And I know that it's been interpreted in the past that solid fence means a fence with no gaps, but that interpretation would then mean using a fence up above can have gaps. So I think we just need to clarify in the language that a fence is a fence with no gaps. A solid fence is something that has screening, and that doesn't need to be concrete. If it's something that's a pre-existing fence, you can put panels up, slats, something just to give screening, because I think that was the original intent. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. The next consideration is SU 2019-03, a request to establish a nonprofit club and our lounge at 901 Birchwood Drive. And Randy, do you want me to yield this to you to say anything about this?
Well, the last meeting, there were some concerns among the council and maybe the planning and zoning, what parcel on the plat was the conditional use or special use being applied for. So this evening, we have, at least for the council's sake, the plat, and it's highlighted on there, the property that the Oaks Lodge from Rocky Mount is looking to purchase, which is the former clubhouse of the Birchwood Golf Course.
Do I hear a motion that we grant this request?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
One question, Mayor, just to confirm what it appears that this property does include the lake. Is that right?
Pond, yes. Tina? I'm sorry?
Tina, do you know if the eight acres includes the pond or most of the ponds?
Yes, it includes the pond.
Okay.
And it looks as if it's taking a small portion of the golf course also, right?
I'm sorry?
It looks like it's taking a little bit of the golf course, too?
Yep. Yes, sir, it does.
Okay, all right.
And with that pond goes the ducks.
And the keeping of the ducks.
And the keeping of the ducks.
Is there any other discussion?
Uh, just that it was the planning board's recommendation that we move forward with this, but with the renter, with a recommendation that a renters agreement with security is needed to be part of the application process.
Right.
So I think that's something that needs to be taken into account.
I'll amend my motion to approve to include that part also.
Okay. Any other? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the next is the consideration of an amendment to an inducement agreement between the Carolina Gateway Partnership and the Town of Nashville and Prime One Builders. And I'm going to yield that to you to talk about. Oh, there you are.
Yes.
Brad.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm Brad Hufford with the Carolinas Gateway Partnership. Just wanted to update the board about the consideration of the amendment of the original inducement agreement set forth between the Carolinas Gateway Partnership, the Town of Nashville, and Prime One Builders. As you know, the town purchased the area of Cook Road, which is home to the West Nashville Business Park, and we have an agreement with the developer, Prime One Builders, and he constructed a shell building with the intent of, as that building is occupied, he would go ahead and build another building on that lot. When we started to look at the land there, ran into some issues with the developable acreage that's out there. I believe there's a drainage ditch, and so, and he intends to honor the commitment of the inducement agreement, but with where he would want to develop that next building would be a challenge financially, so he asked to amend the amendments to do a land swap for an additional 2.38 acres that the town owns just north of the original park. And I believe Town Manager Lansing has provided the board a map of the site plan for that and would show the area in consideration.
He has. Thank you, Brad. Do I hear a motion that we accept this amendment to the agreement with Carolina Gateway?
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Brad, are we still moving forward on the existing building that's out there now?
Yes, sir. We're actively working on that as we speak.
And the others project we was talking about?
Yes, sir.
That's still moving forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Brad, maybe another quick follow-up question. Did you ever hear anything from Southern Link on internet service for the park?
Yep. We are working on two different development issues with that park, the extension of three-phase power from Duke Energy Progress, and also the internet service to that site. And so actually got two different vendors that are looking to develop the plans for extending the infrastructure needed to serve that park, and they're, it's going to take them a week or so to develop their plans and give us some costing back on that. But I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions in regard to that.
Well, we're excited, and we want to see something out there soon.
I do, too. Yes, ma'am.
But thank you, Brad. Is there any more, is there any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Next, we have some budget amendments that we have to address, and I think we address them one at a time. So Sam, would you take number one, please? Amendment number 15.
Thank you. Okay, so Budget Amendment 15, this, this has, this deals with some balance sheet cleanup that we are going to address. So the first portion of this, it appears that a while back, it was booked that the general fund owes the enterprise fund some money, so we'll just go ahead and do a budget amendment and go ahead and transfer that money to take care of that expense. The other two portions, there were a couple of old projects that we had already completed, and the projects are, all the bills and everything have been paid associated with those two projects. However, the general, the enterprise fund had pledged some monies to the project, and the monies were never transferred to the capital project fund. So this budget amendment just takes care of the transfer. So this is not, none of these have anything to do with any cash. No cash will be spent.
Okay.
No cash was already spent. This just cleans up balance sheet.
Do I hear a motion for us to adjust this amendment number 15? Move to a question. Okay.
Was this in the letter from the local government commission?
It has something to do with that. It's, it's dealing with one of the subjects, yes. So we got, received a letter from the local government commission regarding some findings on last fiscal year's audit. It appears that some of the transfers that had been completed last year were not budgeted appropriately. So this is what should have been done. We should budget any transfer from one fund to the, to another, so that's just why we were doing this. Even though there's no cash involved, we still have to do a budget amendment to record the transfer of the funds.
So this, this will clear it and make it right?
Yes.
In other words, the paper trail just wasn't clear.
That's right. And so this will close out those two projects that have already been done and paid for.
And we do have procedures, or getting procedures in place, so we won't get these other letters again.
That's right.
Was there a second? I know there was a second. Okay. Yeah, that's right. You made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Number two.
So Budget Amendment 16, I had briefly mentioned this at our budget retreat. A while back, before a capital project fund, separate capital project fund, capital reserve fund was established, the town did earmark funds for capital projects, and they just took that money away within the general fund itself. But then later, a capital project fund was established. However, these funds were never moved into the capital project fund. And so what I'm proposing to council today is to formally move these funds that had been previously earmarked for capital projects, capital needs, that still resides within the general fund. Just go ahead and formally move those funds into our general fund, capital project fund, so that they will be formally earmarked on the books for capital projects, like they originally were intended.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we adjust this amendment number 16?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question for Sam. Do you know roughly, Sam, what the balance in the capital reserve fund is?
So it's about, it's a little over 600,000. So this will give us 900,000 to work with as far as capital project needs in the general fund.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any more discussion? All those, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Number three.
Budget Amendment 18 is a list of items. The town manager is authorized to approve line item transfers within a department that's under $5,000. Anything that's over $5,000, or that is between departments, has to be approved by council. So that's what these are. These are just items that we don't want to go over budget, and so we're just requesting to be able to remove monies from one line item to another. So for example, the first item, so within the cemetery department, one of the things that we're responsible for is buying back cemetery lots if a resident wishes to sell that back to the town. So we've done a number of those this year, but we, that expense was not budgeted, and so we want to make sure that we have funds or we have a budget in place to cover that. So that's part of that. There were a couple of emergency repairs that we had to take care of, a door repair at the police fire complex, repair funds for the dock lift station. There was an emergency repair that we had to do there, and there was a flooring repair that we did at town hall in the lobby. And so this budget amendment provides funds to take care of those.
Was that the building maintenance, 10,000?
That's right. And that, that 10,000 takes care of the town hall lobby as well as the fire, police fire complex door. So it's both of those together. Oh, and furthermore, so we had budgeted some grant funds, the drug prevention grant, so we did not actually receive that grant, and so I just want to remove that as a revenue source this year, because we are not going to receive that.
Do I hear a motion that we make this amendment 18 adjustment?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's time for the town managers to report.
Mayor, before we, before we go further, I, uh, I, while we're talking to town manager Randy about it, and I've talked to a few other council people, but the other week when we, our first budget get-together, we had our audit report for the year. The procedures, the paper trails and stuff that we, we got zapped for with this letter that all of us received, I was a little disappointed that our audit firm didn't bring it to our attention. Randy was aware of it, not quite sure Sam was aware of it, but then I guess it would have been okay, but then when all of us council people get a letter, kind of wondered, like, where did this come from? Did it come out of the blue? So I think he should have at least alerted us on this, that we were coming short on these transfers like this. I mean, like I said, no money was in the wrong place, and nothing was done illegal and nothing like that, but like I just said a few minutes ago, it was just a paper trail was not correct, but even that, we should have been noted about, given an alert about it. So that gives us more reason to further discuss what we've already discussed about auditors.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I just want to say in the future, you know, if I hear of anything like that, I'll make sure that you guys are aware, and we, it's not such a surprise. And a lot of the other items that were included in that letter from the state, kind of procedural things that we need to take care of, which we have already taken care of many of those. And so you will be in the know and in the loop on how all of that transfers.
But understand, I'm not blaming you for it, Sam. I'm saying that the auditor should have told us, but he didn't.
Well, Sam, you're on a roll with budget amendments, so you might as well talk about 17.
Okay. Budget Amendment 17. So as I have previously mentioned, the town manager has the authority to approve any line item transfer under $5,000 within departments. And so this is just a list of items that we have, transfers that we've done miscellaneous transfers within departments to clean up line items to make sure that they are not over budget.
I have a question about the telephone and postage for our governing body. We did not have a line item for that in our budget, nor did we have a line item for miscellaneous in our budget.
For your, your new budget? For the new budget? We do have a line item for it.
Not in the 1920 budget.
We do. We do have a line item.
Did it not have any monies connected with it? Maybe which is why it didn't show up in the...
They, it does.
Budget document?
It does.
At 10-4-10, 1,100 is the line item?
There's a line item for the mayor's salary, the council's salary, and so on and so on, but nothing for miscellaneous or for postage in the line?
It may be 420. It was meant for the town manager admin. So that may be, that may need to be 10-420.
In my budget, there's nothing for telephone and postage or miscellaneous.
In 10-420?
No.
Which budget are you looking at? 1920. We're looking at 2020.
Do you have your budget with you, Sam?
No, but there's money. There's, there's a budget.
Okay, so...
It's admin. I apologize. It's admin.
So that 410 should have been the 120?
Okay, a typo.
I apologize. It's 420.
That makes a big difference.
It's a whole department.
It's just like if you don't have accurate information, it makes you look foolish.
I apologize.
And just like this map last week, you know, it was not clear what was in the eight acres. So when I'm going through this, okay, because I have questions about other line items.
In this amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Like public buildings, professional and contracted services. And you go down to police, the appreciation dinner, that was the Hope Initiative line item?
That line item has now been changed to appreciation dinner. They received a $1,000 grant for that, so I just moved that over to a line, so that money, that $1,000 grant that was given specifically for that...
But in budget, it said Hope Initiative, so...
We no longer, that we no longer have a Hope Initiative.
Exactly, but we wouldn't have known that, you know?
So you changed the name of the line item or reused it?
Because there were no funds budgeted for Hope Initiative this year, so just reused that.
Anything else, Louise?
No, but that was not clear, what I was talking about, the governing body, when it should have been admin.
Yeah.
So is it clear for everybody now? Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Louise, okay?
Just a few things to bring the council up to date on, you know, our, our agreement with Nash County for Glover Park, one of the things that they had asked us to do is to make sure the, the heating and air conditioning in the building was working, and we had, we had $25,000, $25,000 budgeted in this year's budget to take care of that. Lee collected bids on that, and we went with the low one, actually the only one. Now, I'm pleased to report to the council that we got that system replaced, and we were $14,000 under budget for that, so that's good news. Police Department is also, the Zerkr software that the council approved to purchase back in October, its startup day has been pushed back a few times because they've gotten additional fire, or police departments in the area to also, and they wanted to roll it out all at the same time. So chief says we're looking at February 18th for that software to be implemented and used by our department. The police chief also did inform me that he's working on a COPS grant, C-O-P-S grant, that would allow us to apply for 75% of the funding for three new police officers. The strings attached, obviously after three years, we have to fund them ourselves and keep them in place for the same duration of time.
So they pay 75%?
Of the wages and benefits of those new positions.
So how many?
Wait.
The chief is...
I'm sorry, it's for one officer for three years.
Oh.
One.
I'm getting information on that as far as the other five, and the council, the council, that's the top of the grant, was up to 75, well, 75% of the salary, including the grant benefits for three years, and then on that stipulation, if the council approves, and then we get the grant, we have to carry the position for one year after the three years.
And only one officer, not three?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I'm making confusion. It's one officer for three years.
I was hoping it was three.
I was hoping it was 100% of three.
But it's 75% for all three years, right?
For one.
Yes, sir. 75% grant benefits salary for three years.
For three years for one person.
Question regarding that, chief, as far as outfitting the officer, that's, that will be the town's responsibility, I'm assuming?
Yes, ma'am, and I'm still doing, I've never filed for a COPS grant. I've talked to several departments who have the same issue. I have very difficult to grant, so I'm still gathering that information.
Okay.
One more thing to note, the ladder truck that we're purchasing from the Cary Fire Department, which is due here, March 2nd, understand from our fire chief that Cary's taken it out of service, they're running it through their shop to give it the once-over-twice, and they're going to put a new set of tires on it for us before it goes down the road, which is about a $10,000 venture to put new tires on that truck, which is really nice. And then one final thing, our parking brake brought out this morning, that Nash County is having recycling day coming up on March 7th. And Marguerite, did you want to maybe give a few details on that, like you did at our staff meeting?
Sure. Part of the Nash Edgecombe County Keep America Beautiful Committee is that they take and they, it's staffed by City Rocky Mount, but they have a Nash County Recycles Day and they have an Edgecombe County Recycles Day.
they have an Edgecombe County Recycles Day on March 7th. It's the Nash County Recycles Day. It'll be held in the courthouse parking lot. It'll have shred event, batteries, medications, prescriptions. No household hazardous waste that will be taken. That will be taken in the fall at Golden East Mall when they do a bigger event at the mall for household hazardous waste. But it's free, so you can bring anything you need shredded and everything, light bulbs. And we should be, also have a, been there to collect plastic bags, too.
What was the date? What was the date again?
March 7th from 10 to 1. So 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the parking lot of the courthouse.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Council, Kate, do you have anything to say? Any comments?
I don't have any comments tonight, other than just thanking everyone for coming out. And a special thanks to Mr. Mangano. I know we've done this event in the past, and it's always been fun, and I have taken advantage of the running into kids at the supermarket opportunity. And it is, it's really nice to be able to engage with the little people of our community. So thank you, everyone.
Louise?
Mr. Mangano, is the kickoff day the second or the third?
It is the second. Did I say the second?
No, I think you've said third, but in our notes, it was a second. I just wanted to clarify.
It is the second.
Okay. Also, Chief Puckett, there is an active shooter response class tomorrow morning at 9:00 in this room.
Yes, ma'am. At 9:00, the town is going to be canceled here in the championship.
Okay. Is it open to the general public, or?
If, if they want to come, we have another battle on the 25th for the general public, and we're going to have several more. Farm Bureau reached out to me last night. We're going to schedule them for them after hours at Farm Bureau, but the businesses are catching on. So we're going to have it for the public as well, but I wanted to go ahead and provide the necessary training for the council and the town staff to get this room first and this one.
Right. And Officer Danforth will be teaching the class.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And I had one question about the ladder truck that we will take possession of, and where will we be housing that?
Chief, you want to field that question?
At this time, we're playing those doors, including the carport behind the station. We're going to put it on the carport right there if it gets through the plan.
Okay, behind the station. Okay.
Chief, has the county released those funds to us yet?
No, sir. We're just a minute later, so we'll get that taken care of.
And how much is the second one, the second carport?
10,000.
I mean, how many 400s have you got?
No, we're not, we're not building a new station for 94,000. I wish.
Not for 94,000.
Anything else? Lynn?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, too. One thing I had, I wonder if maybe Randy, at some point in the future, one of our meetings, you might give us an update on those items brought before the council, our public forum. There's quite a number of them, and just so we could have an opportunity to see how we're doing on those things as far as our citizens are concerned.
Okay.
Mary?
Not to be redundant, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It seems like we started out, started out a new year with a, with a different outlook on stuff, and we've got more public participation, public attendance, and that's great. Glad to see it. And I'm waiting for my book. That's all I have.
And I also would like to thank you so much for coming out, and it's just been a pleasure working with you. And my goal is for Nashville to be the best little town you've ever seen. I told somebody I was going to make it a hallmark town. And Mr. Mangalo, again, we look forward to working with you and the school. You know, my heart's with the schools, so we're going to see that it's a great program. But thank you so much, and I agree with Lynn. We've got to let our citizens know what we're doing and with their concerns. And I know we've already started doing a few things, but anyway, again, thank you so much. We're here to serve you. If you ever need us, please don't mind calling. Thank you so very much. Now we will, do I hear a motion for us to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 for a legal issue?
So may I.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.